Okay, we're gonna call a meeting to order. This is the County Board of Supervisors Tuesday, January eighteenth. Seat of evidence?
The County Board of Supervisors' January eighteenth meeting notice and agenda was posted in the Government Center Building in two places, posted on the county website on January seventh, 2022, and was posted in a legal newspaper the week of January tenth, 2022. In addition, on Friday, January seventh, at 3:34 PM, the Office of the County Clerk distributed copies of such notice of meeting to supervisors, media, supervisors and media via email or mail.
Joe, are you on WebEx or watching our meeting?
Yes, I am. This is Attorney Lozo, and yes, that is appropriate notice. Thank you.
Roll call.
Brad Olson.
Here.
Bob Brody.
Here.
Keith Warndall.
Here.
Chris Nelson. Tracy LeBlanc, here. Dan Ruck.
Here.
Mike Pritchard.
Here.
Sharon Kelly.
Here.
Kim O'Connell.
Here.
Amy Middleton, here. DeLuque.
Here.
Fran Dunkinson, here. Russ Arkham. Don Bonifides. Fine. And Joe Demmeley.
Here.
Right now, we have fourteen of the fifteen.
I do waitens.
I do waitens to the flag. I think I'm the state of America and I'm here to the Republic for righteous stands by my history, undergone, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number five, disclosure of board member conflict of interest regarding matters noticed on this agenda. Just raise your hand when we get to that. We have a motion to approve the agenda?
Hold.
First and a second. Get it back, clerk?
Luke and Rock, right?
Okay. Any discussion about the agenda? See, none? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Carry. Number seven matters offered for adoption on the consent agenda. A, consideration corrections of the published minutes from December twenty first, 2021, a county board meeting.
How much?
Do we have a motion to approve that? We have a second? Second, any discussion? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Carry. Fred, public comment? Do we have any public comment?
Nope.
Anyone in here that has public comment, you have to go upstairs to make public comment. Can you turn the sound system on? I can't. A sound system in here? You gotta turn your sound system on, sir.
Pardon?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's up.
It's done. You know what I would say if you have a hard time hearing, I'd just move your chair maybe right up front. But yeah, it's, I don't know that we have speakers in here for us. So no public comment? Public comment is closed, and... Number nine on the agenda, proposed resolutions, ordinance, and other board action. Resolution zero four dash twenty-two, resolution support of Polk County's agreement to pay cost share for the 2022 to 2024 municipal dam grant program slash Atlas Dam. Keep on that.
I've asked, we have two dams that we're applying for, and I've asked Bob who knows the details, just to give you a brief overview of those two.
Do we, so we're gonna get a presentation, and then we're gonna get a first and a second? Is that how we're gonna do it? You're gonna talk about both, Bob, first?
I can.
Sure.
Be real brief.
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone. Having a little deja vu. Two years ago, we brought a similar resolution regarding Atlas Dam to you. That time, we didn't get the grant. The main intent of both resolution oh-four twenty-two and oh-five twenty-two, they're basically support documentation for the municipal dam grant program. As you may or may not know, that's a two-year cycle. In fact, the deadline for that is March fourth, 2022. Little history, we acquired, Polk County did, acquired Atlas Dam in 1968. Back in January of 2020, so two years ago, we received a letter of concurrence from the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources that outlined some needed repairs. In that letter of concurrence, it has your dam rating, and that's, this is, efficiency rating for that dam is there. So it's not any urgent need, but there is a need to repair some items on that dam. In particular, they've asked that we add staff gauges to measure water levels on the Atlas Dam. The left embankment, there's a depression there, and it's experiencing some seepage. Two years ago, SEH, which is a consulting firm, did an estimated cost, that's pretty nominal, just needs some fill and riprap at about $5,000. There also, there's a need to do some concrete repair on the right wing wall. There's some exposed rebar, some needs in concrete work. That might require a drawdown, but the estimated cost at that is $65,000. So, in that letter of concurrence, the DNR asked that it gets repaired by the year 2024. Engineering, construction costs, request for proposals have been released on that, determine the actual cost. Basically, this is a way to subsidize the cost of that repair. It's our hope, unlike two years ago, that we'll be successful. I think Vince has mentioned, the state has increased that pool of money from four million to ten million. There's a lot of need throughout the state. It is a competitive process. Basically, if we repair this dam, it prolongs the lifespan of the structure, increases safety. There's only three or four houses in the hydrological shadow of that dam, but it does potentially save costs to the county through a grant subsidy. Again, we're just trying to avoid what happened a few years ago with D.D. Kennedy, where they per the full cost. So that, that is the intent of the resolution, just to support that municipal dam grant application. Chairman, would you like me to transition into the next one? Resolution oh-five twenty-two, same purpose, however, it serves an additional purpose. This allows Polk County to draw down the $2 million state allocation for its repair. So it's twofold. It serves both as a support documentation to the grant application, but also is used by the DNR to draw down those funds. RFP has been released for engineering costs, as well as construction costs for its repair. I think the due date for that is February ninth, so we'll have a good idea of the cost will be for the repair of the Clamp Falls Dam. The grant application and, and repair plans, once they are received, we'll submit them to the DNR along with this resolution. Hopefully, the bids come in under two million. Otherwise, there's another decision point for you all.
Is there any questions for Bob on either one of those?
Second one, is it still 2024 is when that has to be done by?
For the Atlas?
No, for the Clamp Falls.
Clamp Falls?
Their deadline for that one?
Yeah, for the state allocation, the clock is already running. We have two years to repair them. Two years back to August, so we got a year and a half.
Thank you, Bob. Do you guys wanna take those at one at a time? We have a resolution, zero four dash twenty-two, your motion? Doug? How do you second? Any other discussion on the Atlas Dam grant? See, none? Oh, excuse me, Mike?
I agreed, both of these resolutions have been kind of open-ended of what the county would pay. That intended, or was there any maximum?
You answer that question, Bob?
I anticipate the cost to repair the Atlas Dam to be anywhere from 65 to 100,000. We received a grant that would subsidize half that cost. Clamp Falls Dam, another question?
I guess it'd be the same question for Clamp Falls if we have that.
Right. Oh, well, we've delivered and submitted the RFP. That closes February ninth, so we'll have bids on the engineering and construction costs for that repair. We'll have that data to include in the grant application, and at that time, we'll know approximately how much cost it is.
Where does that information go to, what committee first, before it would come to the county board in February? Does that go to Environmental Services, or is that public safety for dams and highways now? Gen Gov? Yeah, so you'll get it at Gen Gov next month, Mike, before we vote on anything. All right, see no other questions? We had a motion and a second on resolution zero four twenty-two. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Poll, same sign? Carry. We have a motion on resolution zero five dash twenty-two on support of the agreement to pay cost share for the 2022 to 2024 municipal dam grant program for Clamp Falls Dam.
Hold.
Okay, we had a first and a second. Any other discussion? See, none? All, oh, go ahead.
This, Bob, I understand, so we don't know what the cost of this really is. We're doing this before we have the RFP because the grant deadline requires you to do this, or we have a little bit of a chicken and the egg thing going on?
True, but we need to know those estimated costs. We need to know the estimated cost. Hopefully, it'll come under $2 million. If that's the case, then the state allocation will cover that. If they exceed $2 million, well, that's why we have this grant application. That'll pay for the gap financing or the, between, you know, with the, if it's greater than $2 million.
So Bob, I wanna jump in there. Can Chad, you fill, or Mo, you fill in that gap that got missed right there?
So the policy states, any grants that are unbudgeted, anything like that, have to go to general government for approval of acceptance. So if we got a grant that required a match, or even a grant that doesn't require a match, and, you know, or a grant that has any costs associated with it, it has to go to the Gen Gov committee.
But I think the question that Amy has too is, we have $2 million, but we also have 575,000 from Northwestern in the same pot of money.
Correct.
Correct, and that could fill the gap, correct?
There's other things, I mean, Harpoth, there's those two other lots you could sell.
But we have $575,000.
We do.
Is designated to cover any overages over $2 million, even if we don't get grant money.
We have, yeah, roughly, roughly 2.57 in the dam fund between the state money and the Esper.
Have they given, has Northwestern cut us the check yet?
Yeah, we have the money.
And what, what was the amount of that check? Do you remember?
Five hundred and seventy-three. Five seventy-four, roughly.
Okay.
And that's in the bank already.
Oh, yeah? Anything more to add?
Just to add that when Northwest was going through this with errors, as they hired to look at the repairs on there, their estimates, I believe, were around 1.8 million dollars.
Yeah.
In the state, it allows us to get our $2 million, so we're covered up to $2 million with the earmarked funds that the, our representatives got for us, and then anything above that would be covered under the municipal dam grant at a 50/50.
And now, what if we don't use $2 million? What if it comes in under $2 million? We don't get the $2 million.
We don't get the $2 million.
We spend it, and we get what we spend.
Gotcha.
We get covered whole.
We don't get the grant.
No.
Yeah, if we don't go over our $2 million allotment, then we probably can't apply for that grant either. Why would we?
If it becomes, it becomes all, yeah.
Let's all come back to the county board. Okay, see no other questions? Do we have? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Here. Oh, same sign? Carry. Environmental Services Committee, C, resolution oh-one dash twenty-two, resolution concerning Wisconsin wolf population and requesting revision to Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources's old management plan. Who wants to speak to that? Is it Environmental Services? Who signed it? Was Supervisor Olson?
Yeah.
Supervisor Olson, do you wanna speak to this resolution?
I can. You can hear me, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Yeah, this is just pretty much a rewrite of a resolution from 2015 that simply changes the names of government officials and adds in asking the county's association, as well as the towns association, to work with the DNR to make sure that there is elected officials from around the state, or areas of the state with high wolf depredations, to be on the new wolf advisory committee.
All right, and so this came out of Environmental Services, and what was the vote? Did you name this chair? Okay, so we need a motion and a second to bring this resolution to the floor?
Hold.
Your motion, you have a second from Doug. Now, is there any further discussion about this, or any questions for Supervisor Olson?
Amendment, whenever you wanna do that.
Add, be proper now.
So, I have amendment, Professor Olson, on...
Here, let's all get to...
Line forty-three, I don't know, it doesn't, it could be forty-three or thirty-eight that said, "Be it further resolved that the Polk County Supervisors encourage the position of the expired chair, expired chair position of the Natural Resources Board to step down and let the currently appointed chair resume duty." That would go in either line forty-three or thirty-eight.
Can, can you repeat that one more time? Do you have it written?
Yeah. Here, I can give it to you. So be it further resolved that, yeah, I have this wording a little bit added up. Be it further resolved that the Polk County Supervisors encourage the expired chair position of the Natural Resources Board through the Wisconsin DNR step down and let the current appointed chair resume duty. That make sense?
Sure, it sounds like it. It'd be easier probably if you read that, Amy, if you had your mask down and you faced us, because it's hard to hear you with the mask on.
Okay.
It is hard for everyone to hear.
Yeah.
One more time.
Okay, well, freeze the term. Oh, "Be it further resolved that the Polk County Supervisors encourage expired chair position of the Natural Resources Board to the Wisconsin DNR step down and let the currently appointed chair resume duty." And, period.
This, okay, so is there a second with that amendment? So that's your amendment.
Oh, second.
So we have a second. Yep, and now we can discuss, correct?
You say what that, so do you want me to tell you what that means? So where we're at right now is, and this connects to the wolf issue, is the Natural Resources Board is the policy arm at the state level, so they're appointed by governors, and it's the policy arm of the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources. And they cover everything from water quality, wolf, forestry, all the different issues that DNR looks at. So they're this policy arm, and they have staggered terms to avoid situations where one governor would load on, and then the other governor would load on, so they kind of have tried to stay, have it be steady and whatever, not up and down and pendulum swinging. Well, the situation we have right now is the current, the chair from the former administration's expired, the position expired November first last year, 2021, and has refused to step down, causing this fluffle at the DNR, and one of the issues has been this wolf issue. And so, because he won't step down, people aren't, they haven't had their meetings, we haven't been able to move the policy forward, so I'm encouraging with this to tell them, step down, let the person who's appointed come in, so we can move this policy forward on a number of things, but this wolf one in particular. So that's what that's about.
Doug, you had a question?
I'm not disagreeing with Amy, but I, but in, we read the Wisconsin Outdoorsman, and I think this issue has been resolved.
Oh, it has?
Had to bring it with. So I don't want anybody to quote me, but I read that this issue is to go in on.
So is there any issue legally, Joe, with that amendment to this resolution?
I don't believe so. I don't think it substantially changes the, I mean, it's not gonna cause it to violate the open meetings law. The resolution is an encouragement. There's no active part of the resolution, other than to encourage, and, and again, I don't think Amy's amendment modifies it such that it's gonna violate the open meetings law. So I see no legal problem with it, as to the issue of whether that position or that issue's been resolved. I, you know, I have no idea and can't opine on that.
When I looked, it was still active, but I, I didn't scour the internet.
Jay?
Yeah.
That's a moot point, I think. What difference does it make if we approve this amendment, and it's been resolved? It hasn't hurt anything anyway.
I have it in there, what you're saying.
Fran?
This whole proposed resolution is really just kind of a feel-good resolution. It's just a recommendation to state. We're not changing it.
Correct.
We're not really telling, we're letting the state know what our opinion is, but they can take it or leave it.
Any other questions about the amendment? All right, all by voting aye for the amendment? Say aye?
Aye.
Yes, the amendment, same sign? Carry. Now we're back to the original resolution. Is there any other questions about the resolution? Okay? Roll call.
Roll call, please.
Roll call vote on this. Supervisor Olson, did you have another comment?
No, no. Supervisor Rook just beat me to the punch.
Okay, so there'll be a roll call on that?
All right, first one is Kim O'Connell.
Yes.
Amy Middleton?
No.
DeLuque?
Yes.
Fran Dunkinson?
No.
Russ Arkham?
Yes.
Don Bonifides, he is on the phone. I don't know.
Well, let's try to find him before we finish our vote. Don, is that you?
Well.
Don?
I'm on. I can hear you real well. You can't hear me.
Yeah, now we can. How do you vote on the resolution?
Yes.
Go, Demmeley.
Yeah.
Brad Olson?
Yes.
Doug Brody?
Yes.
Keith Warndall?
Yes.
Tracy LeBlanc?
Dan Ruck?
Yes.
Mike Pritchard?
Oh.
Sharon Kelly?
Yes.
We have eleven yeses and three noes.
Yeah, I'd vote yes and roll call. The resolution oh-one dash twenty-two passes as amended. Did everyone get the vote? Supervisor Warndall?
Yes.
All right. So now we're on general government. Resolution number zero-two dash twenty-two, resolution providing for the issuance, sale and delivery of eight million, $200,000 general obligation promissory note, Series 2022 of Polk County, Wisconsin, establishing the terms and conditions, therefore directing its execution and delivery, creating a debt service account, therefore, and awarding the sale thereof.
So, briefly rehash. November, you authorize the administrator to prepare borrowing from Remer Bank. In December, we passed the four resolutions. One adjusted the budget to 8.2, one prepaid 162,000 on existing debt with tax paid sale profit, one refinanced remainder of the existing debt, 7 million, 50,000 at the 2.1 interest from the 2.55. And then by a supermajority, you declared formal intent to borrow up to 8.2 million, which brings us to today, and if you recall, we had to spread them out because of banking laws, in one and twenty-one, one and twenty-two. Resolution for the 8.2 million. The note was included in the packet. That's the formal note, just going over the resolution we passed in November. Same, right off PowerPoint that piece. During December. So, resolution oh-two twenty-two, that's the formal note you have before you, very similar to the refinancing note. That resolution authorized the signing of a promissory note up to 8.2 million to the new debt with Remer Bank. The interest rate will be 2.1%, and amount up to 8.2 million can be drawn. You can take it and up to 12 months, late draws allowed, beginning February first, 2022, ending January 31st, 2023, at which time the note becomes locked, and that's your set debt off of that note. The first draw occurs in February 2022. We're gonna draw about 415,000, the LHB cost up to this point that's been paid out of the fund balance. We'll replace the fund balance with that amount. The first payment on the new debt will be due in February 2023. That's when the note becomes locked, because the last draw's January first, 20, or January 31st, 2023. And then we have the debt tentatively structured. We can restructure depending on how much we ultimately borrow from it. But the debt payment will not exceed 2.4 million for the existing debt and the combination of the new note. DMA can adjust the debt payment as need be. If, if we decide only, that you only want the administrator to draw 6 million from it and pay the rest in front balance, then we'll structure the debt the same way, and the payment will be 2.4 until the debt's paid down. If you draw the 8.2, the payment won't exceed 2.4 until the debt's paid. We use that 2.4 as our guiding principle for bonding for perpetuity. That way, we keep the debt levy the same. And deny requires a simple majority of the form of...
Any questions for Chad?
I have one.
Yes, ma'am.
So, January 23rd, 2023 is the cutoff. I just remember there was a 300-day waiting period just for the insulation. Who knows how long?
Well, Mo and I have talked about how we're gonna draw this down. We're only gonna draw for the invoices due that month. We probably won't, we have to draw in February for the first draw. We don't necessarily have to draw in March. We don't have to take 12 draws because... So what Mo and I will do, we will evaluate the invoices due, and we're only gonna draw for the amount due, and come February, come March, if we only have 50 or 60,000, we likely won't draw. I think when Mo and I talked, we anticipate the next set of costs, it's probably gonna be around March or April. When we get to that last draw period, what we'll do is we'll see how much is outstanding, how much you all want to come from the debt, and then we'll anticipate what we need to do for that final draw. The goal is to not draw and start paying interest until we need the money to pay invoices, and we're in a, we're in a cash fortified position right now, as far as we have liquid cash in the bank, that, you know, if we have one month where there's only 90,000 in invoices due, and the next month we see greater, we may just pay out of the liquid cash and not draw until the greater comes to us.
I have one question for you, Chad. So this is more like a line of credit, almost.
It is.
Do, does the county have any other lines of credit that you ever use for cash flow?
No. We have... We have, we have plenty of investments and all that if need be we were to pull. We step ladder our CDs and that kind of thing or so. We have plenty of cash resources. Any other questions for Chad?
Just the last one, pardon my point. So if we get in a situation where this roof drags on to 400 days, is there a deadline on when they will say you can't draw?
Yeah, January 30th. January 31st.
That's what you're talking about, so you're going to preload at that point?
We'll preload. We'll estimate how much is outstanding and how much is out.
Yeah.
And we'll preload based on that, on projections. So, and we'll try to project as close as possible. But that is one thing we benefit from is we're in a cash healthy situation, that it's not quite enough we've got to cash. Yes, ma'am.
This will get rolled into the final note. After we're done, we close this out, this will get rolled into the final note?
Exactly.
Okay. And is it premature to ask if that'll have any pre?
There's no prepayment penalty. The terms of this note are the final note, other than it closes on January 31st. There's no prepayment. We cannot prepay with another debt issuance. And we can't refinance until 2027. It may be later than that. It may be 2028, but I think that's when the refinance is. Unless we were to do something similar, as you all recall, the reason you chose Remmers, they opened the note up to refinance if we went with it. Any questions from supervisors on WebEx or on the phone?
None.
When is the total sunset date, Dr. Chris?
Mr. Bonner Price, I couldn't quite understand. Could you ask again?
When is the, when is the final sunset date on that loan?
The final payment date? It's a, it's a 10-year note unless we decide to prepay.
Okay, thank you.
And we'll know the numbers on the construction project by the February board meeting. February, we're going to get the numbers of the project.
Right.
We're going to be dealing with this for, it can be the whole, this whole project. All right, thanks, Chad. Could we have a motion on Resolution 0322? Motion, you have a second?
I have a second.
Any other discussion? Being done, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Carry on. So Resolution number 0322, I'm going to step down because I was actually offered that resolution. I don't know whether there'd be much debate on it, but I think I should step down while you guys have questions. Jay, will you have the chair?
You're on each? All right.
Looking good up there, Jay.
He always looks good.
We're on Resolution 0322. Yeah, I left you a few if you want to eat them. Nope, that other one you can have them too. Need a motion to, to bring it to, or a motion to approve?
Make the motion there.
Motion to approve by Nelson.
Second.
Second by Doug. Well, I'll open for discretion.
Yeah, so I'll just briefly discuss this. I talked to the directors, I talked to Vance. It's something being on the chair, you just hear a little bit more about some of the issues that we have as far as hiring employees, retaining employees, sitting through the sheriff and the deputies, meetings with how we negotiate their pay. Clearly, the county needs to look at, and all this is, is a resolution asking staff and the administrator to look at other incentives that we could use in our system, basically award individuals that maybe are going over and beyond, and to recognize kind of the stars in the company to retain them or to even bring new people in. And so what it basically says is that with the administrator and staff, work on that idea and present it to the new board before the 2023 budget. And that's all the resolution basically says. I don't know if I missed anything, Administrator? No, I think it's a dilemma that many counties are considering now. Coming from the private sector, as you know, it's not unusual to have opportunities to differentiate a little bit, people who go above and beyond. As I understand it, Mr. Nelson's resolution is basically giving us the leeway to investigate, look at what other counties might be doing or proposing, consider different options that we can then present to you all. It doesn't designate or declare that we are going to do it, but we'll have an opportunity to discuss it.
Any else have any comments or questions, Jim?
So which policies would this affect? I mean, we'd have to, you'd have to regrade a bunch of policies for this to also, wouldn't you? To get this to fit in.
Does it change in policy? It's not a practice. Not a change in policy, it's more of a program like the tuition reform. Be a program. Right. Or like our benefits package. We would still have. That's administered by the administrator. We would still set a budget, you know, and every year we budget so much for pay raises or pay and so on. We still have to do that. Now, how do we tweak that or adjust it in any way than we would do that? But I don't think it would change any financial policy. The things that did get discussed in general government was how many employees we have, because that question got brought up, I think Supervisor Duncanson did, a little bit about, you know, because everyone kind of, if you're in this department, everyone gets paid the same, right? You get paid the same in this, you get paid the same, you get paid the same, everyone gets paid the same. And so one of the questions was, is because of how many employees do we have that are union and non-union? So when you're union, you kind of give that up a little bit because it's kind of being in a union. And can you give us those numbers again? I don't remember what they were. How many union employees we have and non-union? We have 540 total employees and the only unionized are the 29 field deputies that are not coming in. I think I said 30.
Cameron Luke, I have a comment?
Go ahead.
Yeah, this was discussed at the Wisconsin County Steering Committee. And this is something that cities and counties are both using as a necessary tool nowadays. So I hope it moves forward. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions, comments? Hearing none, we will then move on the resolution. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All the same side? Actually, I want me to call Jordan.
You can sit there, Jay, the rest of the night. Oh, now update on broadband, County Administrator? Thank you. Next two items are not action items, but rather information, because I think they are opportunities for the county that I think are meeting some of our priorities here. And to get us thinking so that you can ask questions and talk to your constituents as well. The first one is on broadband in Polk County. I gave you a copy of this short little presentation, and I'll try to keep this very quick. It's just a discussion outline. We went through it in general government, and so you can look at that. If you recall, in our county board priorities, broadband or high-speed internet bandwidth, whatever you want to call it, is very important. And a few years ago, I was with the EDC and we, you all or most of you in here, passed the broadband forward changes to our permitting process. We also committed $1,000 in a matching grant to any internet service provider who won a PSC grant from the state of Wisconsin. We also got telecommuter forward and recognition for our efforts to work with businesses to encourage telecommuting and have broadband available. PSC grants were flowing into Polk County. I can tell you that soon after that, Polk County was one of the leading counties in terms of getting the number of grants. We have some very good local internet service providers. They're very active, they want to cover the county. Lately, however, the grants, we're not getting so much. And the time is getting critical. Because of the demand for this and the materials and the supply chain, everything's kind of getting to a bottleneck. This next round of grants are up to $100 million will be available in the state of Wisconsin. They're anticipating $400 million in requests. So the thought being is if we want to move on broadband, now's the time to do it. And we have, we think, some ideas that will help. You recall, the cousin was a top priority. Why? It's not just getting email faster and it's not just logging on to the websites you go to. But it's an opportunity for our students and the education. It is enticing families and workers to recognize this as a great place to live. All of you know somebody who's either tried to sell their house or has come in to buy a house and they find out, I don't have good internet, and they're stuck. Mr. Nelson referenced a case where one of his employees can't sell his house now. And because he doesn't have good internet and the people who are interested in buying demand that. The blind is, when you look at the values, it will have a positive impact on our communities and individuals. Few months ago, I contracted with Badger Communications or Cliff Albertson. Cliff will be here next month when we talk about this again, but he is probably the leading foremost expert on broadband. He was so in telecommunications and the internet, and now he's spreading the knowledge on this. And he loves Polk County, his son is looking at land to buy here, and he's helped us out. But we are identifying opportunities to expand broadband. The reason? Oh, I'm sorry. There's a backlog of the cable orders. There are limited funds expected soon. We think that this next round of grants is going to be extremely important. We may not get this much again. So ways we can help expanding the infrastructure of the cable throughout the county, educate on the uses of opportunities, and I'll just say, the reason that's important is many people may not realize just what you can do with high-speed internet and this broadband. It's the uploads, it's the downloads, it's remote working. And by educating people on how it can be used, more people will say, you know what, it's worth the extra $30 a month or $50 a month, whatever it is. We'll educate on what it is and how to use it. And there may be ways, and that's the tough one, the bottom one there is, how do we support those who can't afford it? But that's something the federal government does by offsetting payments, monthly payments by $30 a month. Excellent. In front of you, Matt. This is what Cliff was hired to do, is identify opportunities in this county. I'll just say this, the green is areas where we have the skeleton to have good internet. Either the fiber optic cable or other high-speed internet service providers, so they have pretty good. The yellow, the red is state land, so you can ignore that. The yellow is identified as those areas where we don't have good enough capabilities in terms of broadband. You can see that there's pretty good chunks in some of our growing areas down in the Osceola-Farmington area, from the Turtle Lake area, the Purple Lines or School Districts, and up in the northern part. Now, all of you know that in some of those green areas, we know people who don't have good internet. And maybe Lakeland or maybe Northwest has come, but they haven't gone completely to somebody's house. That is true. But by getting the most number of people, we can direct some efforts in those areas. And when that happens, I talk to the internet service providers, their goal is to, wherever they are with their skeleton, is to expand in those areas. The white hashed areas here represent areas where internet service providers in the county are now expanding or edging out to get more homes. So we will get eventually to every house in the county. But that's a good map, so keep in mind where our opportunities are.
Thank you, Jeff.
We had a meeting of internet service providers a couple of weeks ago, or a few weeks ago. We brought all five that are really in this area and some of the top executives. And we challenged them to say, what is it we can do to get into those areas? And they looked at me and they, they looked at each other and they wouldn't speak to each other because of antitrust concerns and competition. But each one came up to me afterwards and said, you know what? We got a plan to go into all these different areas. And they kind of took and they drew where they were going to go for me. The reason they can is how expensive it is, and so it slows them down if they can't get these grants. If they get the grants, then they will go. And in fact, much of that yellow will be covered a year and a half from now. The potential actions, teamwork is key. What I mean by that is, what I found out is our $1,000, our broadband forward and our telecommuter forward was great because we were the first in the state to have both of those. That $1,000 was a unique idea, and we got a lot of grants. Now, the reason we're not getting any grants to many extents is we don't score well when we apply for these grants, meaning the ISPs. And the reason is, is there's not enough of a county, town, school district, business team. But the ISP is grading is, is okay, we'll fund you with this grant, but we want to know who else has skin in the game. And if you look at, if you look at, I'll show you in a second. If we could allow them to score higher in their grant application process, we think we'll get those grants that will cover those areas on the map. Just a quick summary. Strong commitment to support fans who can garner more PSC dollars. Teamwork is key, and it's not only teamwork, but thanks to Cliff and some of our staff here, we actually have been working now with UWB Extension, with PSC, and with University of Madison and, or University of Wisconsin in Madison, to develop this education and outreach program. When the PSC heard about this, they go, that's exactly what we're looking for. That's kind of a frontrunner. The way Cliff has put it, and the way we're strategizing with the ISP is, we may be the first county in the state to go border to border. What I mean by that is no yellow in the map. We actually have the bones and the structure everywhere, but we can then start edging out to get to every home. It's a big task, and I don't want to oversell that, but that's the start. We can get out front there. We can secure a high percent of homes utilizing, if they have the cable in front of their road, there may be ways we can incent homeowners to bring that cable to their house, help them pay for that if they have to pay for it. Have talked about, could we, could we do what the federal government do for some of our lower-income residents? That's going to be tougher to do, but there may be some things we can do. Finally, just to show you what happened. 38 counties that were awarded significant grants last time had significant county matching. Average project cost of these. Average project cost of these, thirty-eight, was 2.8 million. The average county contribution was 290,000, almost 291,000. Polk County's is $1,000. Average matching county funds, the total cost of the project was 11%. And then the highest percent of matching funds was up to 25%. So, we looked at this, and we talked to the Internet service providers and said, what would it take to get your scores up? What would it take to us to get you to drive into those areas of biggest need, you know, going forward? And they're all unanimous, just support us in this grant process. If you do that, if we win those grants, we go. And we have to do it within eighteen months or two years. So it won't take long. So I just throw this out to you to think about. Arpa funds are available. Somebody asked the general government, how much are we talking about? After looking at the grants and the types of things these guys are doing, after looking at this, I've got an idea, but you could say one and a half to $2 million, and we could, I think, get most of our yellow covered. If we get the grants. If we don't, we don't spend the money, right? Unless we want to do an individual grant to say, you didn't get the grant, we'll still give you this much money if you go into that area. So, I throw this out as something to think about, what you want next month. I'll, unless somebody says, stop, we don't want to do this, I'll come back with a resolution with a more refined, here's the dollar amount, here's the strategy, do you want to do it or not? But this one is time-sensitive because the grant is due, application is due in like mid-March. So that's enough time to put into that grant, here's what the county. Just so you know, too, the town of Osceola has a program already with their Arpa funds. They are contributing up to $80,000 in a matching grant to get that area down in Osceola Township area.
We can save questions till next month when we have the experts.
You can, or call me anytime, and we can discuss. Okay?
Thank you. Might as well stay up there, Vince, you got the next one.
I do, I do. Also on your desk, and this is really just to kind of kick off and introduce to you the summary of the sports complex market analysis. Can you pull that presentation up? The report looks like this, it's still in draft form because we just got a few minor tweaks, and also I wanted to hear from comments from you. But if you could recall, goal was to study the possibility of constructing a high-quality local recreational facility that would serve the local needs while attracting new visitors and give us an economic boost. Targeting sports, recreation, and other activities. Wanted to know what a facility would look like, and what is the size and the cost. I've given you my little presentation here, it's really just an outline to talk about different things. And again, the company that did this with us, Sports Facilities Analytics, they will be here next month, or probably on WebEx, to answer any specific questions you have. We had a stakeholder meeting. This is where we, community leaders, sports leaders, associations, healthcare facilities, come in and throw out the idea, and this is something they would be interested in or supportive of. The athletic directors were all in on the idea of having spring sports seasons extended. Baseball season, if they may know, have daughters or sons that play baseball or softball, half the season's over before they can go outside. Practice times difficult to get, need places for youth and families. And what I'm finding out is, these types of facilities aren't just for sports and aren't just for tournaments, but rather what's happening is, is people are looking for these places to be a place to hang out, to bring families together. It's not just sports, but it's activities that the whole family can participate in. They emphasize things like laser tag as an opportunity because, you know, kids will come play, parents can come play with that. And there are other things as well I'll get into. Okay, these are the types of activities that we're analyzing. Now initially, we started out with a big broad picture of this thing where we're going to do everything. We know that's not going to happen, and you start narrowing it down. SFA has a ton of these around the country that they have studied, analyzed, and we chose them because they also manage a lot of these. So they know what can work and what can't. They very quickly were able to ascertain, in their opinion now, based on the information they have, that not all of these would be feasible. In fact, I can tell you that this site over here is what is drawing the most interest. And the community use, so family entertainment area, meeting spaces, lease space, and so on. You know, one of the biggest clients they have, and what struck me, first thing they asked me is, how many hospitals do you have? Why is that? They said, because hospitals love to partner in these types of things. Not only do they want naming opportunities, they want things for their employees, but also this goes in line with their business model, right? They like the lease space and put a clinic in. And a lot of times, they like to treat athletes or people who participate in stuff, so they're there. So there were lots of people in the community interested in it. You'll see in this report, when you read through it tonight, I'm sure, they broke it down into two different models. One is what they call the community model, the other one is a regional model. The community model is basically smaller. And this is something, it would be two courts, two basketball courts, volleyball courts, a turf area, which is indoor. That turf area would be a couple of baseball infields. It would have side areas with batting cages or turf areas for like, you know, working out, small soccer. One ice rink. They do an analysis of the numbers and the demand within the 30, 60, and 90-minute radius. And you'll see in there, the numbers for hockey, for example, are not huge. But they said that the man, the actual people who coach it, love it, play it, there's not enough ice time. And so they thought one ice rink would be used all the time. Of course, the other space option. Initially, we were talking, we don't know, 100, 200 acres. Theirs is an indoor facility, you know, with some common area, green area outside, but it's really only 11 acres. The cost of a total facility like this right now would be about 37 million. That's not the cost of the county, we're not talking about that. But this is something that if, it would involve businesses, it might involve communities, it would be a public-private partnership, if it's something that people want to do. Not going to do it today, we're not going to do it this year. This is something that we can see, is there a demand out in the public? Okay, this is the regional model, basically the same thing, only it is about twice the size. Not quite the size, but it's bigger. They said this could work. They like the community side better, it's less expensive. But two, because of the demographics here, there's too much competition in essence for the big tournaments. If you're going to do a regional-wide complex like this, you need to have tournaments every weekend or darn near every weekend. And with the competition in the cities drawing them there, there probably wouldn't be enough tournaments here that you could have that often. When I asked them, I said, you like both of them, is there one you like better? And they said, definitely the community one, as opposed to the region. We, higher likelihood of success, funding opportunities, programming will be a key aspect. Location has not been decided. Everybody's going to go into this thing and say, where are you going to put it, where are you going to put it? We don't know yet. We gave them some ideas. What they did was they looked at the demographic numbers from their experience. Their initial draw was to the western portion of the county because that's closer to the larger population. They also had some very interested parties in the Osceola dresser, St. Croix Falls area. So, they kind of highlighted those, but they also looked at places like Balsam Lake and Amherst. And they just kind of talked about the pros and cons. No decision, no preference, no recommendation on location. You'll see that as you read through. Again, I'm not here to say we should do this, we have no timeline on this. This was an idea that said, can we help our community achieve our goals? Can we generate interest from our public that says, this is what we want for our families, for our kids, to help give us an economic boost? May or may not be the right thing, but it's something to think about. And I think that over time, what we can do, you know, and no decision yet, but we can continue to explore the funding opportunities. Is it a public-private partnership? Are there incentives that companies like besides the hospitals, sporting goods, hyper-related companies, other types of things would be interested in? The next step, if we got serious, and again, I don't know if we want to do this right away, want to just think about it, let me do some one-on-one connecting with some of the stakeholders to, again, further gauge the interest. If maybe the next board takes it up and says, okay, is this something we're interested in? Also, what I want to do is have you come to me with, what is, you know, questions, what additional information you need. And then, of course, one option is to say, we don't want this, not what we want to do. But read through the reports, all I'm asking. Get back to me with questions, or concerns, or suggestions. You know, in general government, somebody had some suggestions, you know, I think we could do something like this. This is simply a preliminary market demand. So, if I have to that, if there's anything I can answer, I'd be happy to. Again, the SFA people will be available online next month. They're the experts on this, but can answer more specific questions for you.
Thanks, Vince. Well, I have no appointments.
Oh, I'm sorry, Grant has a question.
Oh.
There are questions, but probably better if I ask the SFA.
I agree. This is just kind of a, here's where we're at today. Okay, number 12, I do not have any appointments. Number 13, Vince, do you have any appointments?
Yes, I do have one appointment to the Veterans Services Board. That is Gregory Sheewee. Gregory's a veteran, very active, I think, in veterans' causes, and has worked and gotten to know Andy Butzler. And he's asked to be appointed, and I've accepted him. It doesn't require a vote, he's just appointed to the Veterans Services Board. He's from Block area.
County Board Chairs Report. The only thing I just would like to make a comment at the end of the year, I just want to say, being the chair, getting a whole new grasp of what the county's really doing, I just want to thank all the directors for a good year. I want to thank all the employees of the county, and I'm very proud to be part of the team. So I want to thank all you guys, all I have. Vince, you got a county administrators report?
Um, you think. You've heard about the vaccine mandate from the president. The OSHA one on private businesses has basically been blocked. The CMS vaccine mandate, however, is still in place. CMS stands for Medicare and Medicaid Services. That affects healthcare facilities. So GAM will be required in the next month or so to have everyone vaccinated if they're to continue to work there. There are exceptions. You have medical and religious exemptions. So we are putting in place the process for everyone to either be vaccinated or to apply for that exemption and get that taken care of. So we will be working through that if you hear about it. Good news, if you recall, a while back, 2020 maybe, it was 20, yeah, I think, late '20, we got a PPP loan, that's Paycheck Protection Program, to GAM because of the COVID-19 crisis, to keep employees because, you know, people were straining. So it was for private businesses and places like GAM, which is an entity in itself. And so they got a loan of $976,000. As we had heard and expected and were hoping for, the government has forgiven that loan. So that's good, that helped out GAM quite a bit. We have a new CJCC coordinator, Melissa Fisher. I have not met her yet, but Chad was, and the staff was involved in an interview. She'll be starting at the end of this month. What I will say is, everyone's talked about her knowledge and her experience. She was a CJCC coordinator in Sawyer County, and she'll be getting started at the end of this month, and obviously focusing on another one of our priorities, and that's reducing crime, county. Finally, Stour Trail has been opened up to snowmobiling this winter as conditions warranted. Overall, we've had very good reports of people enjoying the trails. In particular, a lot of positive comments on the grooming. Even the walkers and the silent sports people who were concerned, hey, I kind of like this trail, and so they've given us feedback. We have had complaints, but not as many as I think we had thought, given it's a new program. People maybe aren't familiar with the rules, the timing, and so on. We've had a couple of snowmobilers left the trail and got on the private property. Had a couple of snowmobilers stay on the trail after it was closed, I think recently, when the snow was down. We had a couple get on it before it opened. And we had one obscene gesture from a cross-country skier to a snowmobile. So those things are reported. And just so you know, we take them all seriously, and we, you know, we ask people to report them to our sheriff's department. The sheriff, the snowmobile club have all said, we want to make sure we stick to the rules. Will there be some challenges? Absolutely, but we will continue to pursue making it as enjoyable as possible for everybody. That's all I have.
Little better now as I've been on the board, but I'm almost litterary. Always ask, put a phase page. When they're open, when they're not. And you click on it, and you can find out almost. I mean, that's, these people that are saying, I didn't know, it's right there. And they all have a phone, and, you know, understand.
Thanks for being on.
COVID-19 update from Community Service Division.
I will be assisting Tanya. So I'm assisting Tanya, I am Jean Schultz, I am the Health Officer, Health Director here. So I'll be providing you the COVID updates. I put on all of your tables a chart showing our COVID cases since the beginning, which was in May 2020. So you can see how we have spiked, came back down, spiked, came back down. And now we're seeing our highest spike since the beginning of the pandemic. So for numbers, just for your awareness, in December, we had a total of 978 positive COVID cases. In the first two weeks of January, we have 941 cases. So we had in total last week, new confirmed cases of 583. So there is a surge going on, I just want to make you aware of that. Our percent positivity from December to January has raised from 17% up to 27%. So we are also very clearly surging. Our tests as well, in the month of December, we did a total of 1,072 tests through using the use of the Highway Department building. This two weeks in January, we're already up at 981. So brief updates on testing, there is a nationwide shortage of rapid antigen tests. That is everywhere, so if you're looking for a COVID test, there's a shortage. Also, our labs in the nation are.
I was going to say that today, I was able to go on the website and sign up for United States Postal Services to have for COVID rapid test at no charge to. rapid test at no charge to outside even for shipping.
The federal government launched their free COVID tests for all a day early. It was supposed to be launched tomorrow, but they updated the website today. So you can go in and each US postal address gets up to four free rapid COVID tests sent to them. So we did put an update on our Facebook page and working on the website to get that information out. They'll start shipping out tomorrow and they believe it's a seven to 12 day turnaround. Also, our lab, we send our current testing samples to a lab in North Carolina, but just across the state and the nations, our labs are being overwhelmed with positive cases. So our turnaround time is closer to that 72 hours plus to get a test result back. But on the horizon, we did purchase some rapid antigen tests using a different company. Put the ordering on Friday. Hopefully we'll have them within the next week. That will ramp up our testing at the county. That's what I have to share. Any questions about COVID?
Do you have a couple of questions? Do you know if that rapid test shipment will slice? Will you be able to share some of that with the schools? Because they're all also.
So our schools go through the state allocation. So they're a separate entity. It's completely separate. So the goal would be that it be open to anybody who resides, works in Pope County. So if school-aged children want to come through our drive-through line, they'll be able to do that. We just won't be able to fully stock up our schools.
Got it. Okay, that's okay. Then we had a, at Health and Human, we had Osceola and Amory. Yeah, Osceola and Amory came, the CFOs, CMOs of those clinics. And it was a rather dire conversation. And they were basically, we're sort of on the precipice. We can't treat people. We have, you know, heart attack people coming in and we can't handle them. And then Joe piped up and said, yeah, that happened to me. So she had three or four take-home messages. Wear your mask, get your booster, get vaccinated. And then the last one was donate blood. So because of the COVID disruption, the blood banks are really low. So I just wanted to relay that and stay out of the ER if you can. Don't do, don't go chainsawing your leg because they really are having trouble. They're really stressed. Oh, and the last thing I want to say is this, so the way these spikes have been, this last spike is really fat. So she talked about how tired the staff is, the nurses and doctors are worn out, administrators worn out. She's an administrator and she's working in the ER sometimes. So it's just been this really long surge that we're sort of like surging at. You know, we're sprinting at marathon distances for a really long.
Amy, thanks for the update and that information.
Yep, thank you very much.
Yes. Say Fran gets the four tests at home and she takes the tests. Do you, what do you do? Do you turn that in to get the results?
There, so they should give you the results right there. So it's an at-home test. You'll, it's either you're gonna do a little swab and then you, it depends on what they are, but you put it in a little on the thing and it'll tell you within 15 minutes if you're positive or negative.
So that information then is not in your information?
Correct. So I do want to point out on this chart on the bottom, I did say reported cases only. It does not include a home test. So if someone takes a home test, there is no requirement to report it to the health department. If they have questions, feel free, definitely call us, but we don't know what's going on with home tests. So this is maybe a brief snapshot. So everything that's reported is either through a official lab, a hospital partner that goes into the state database and we get notified.
So is the lab that you're sending them to in North Carolina then, does that test for the different variants? So you know which variant they are?
That one, it does not. So for our state testing site, we do not use the state lab of hygiene or exact sciences. But we do have the option if our hospital partners would like us to have a sample sequenced. We can have it shipped to the state lab. But there are certain labs like State of, State Lab, Exact Sciences and the City Milwaukee Lab that do routinely run sequencing data. And this information is on the State Lab of Hygiene's website that you can see what percentage is which variant of COVID.
Just for that particular area?
Yeah, so they do it for statewide. So there are samples coming around statewide, but it's just not, I'm not aware of any specific for Pope County.
I have one question for you. So, and it goes on with Sharon saying, so how many home tests are going to be done in a month in the state of Wisconsin? Or how many have been sent out? And the reason I'm asking, could there be like hundreds of thousands of tests done or millions?
Yeah, it just.
That are never going to make any data charge?
Correct.
Sure. Okay.
And so the message is that if you are sick and you have an at-home test, please take it. If you're positive, please stay home, do the isolation quarantine. Give us a call, we'll be happy to talk to you through those stages. If you still have symptoms and you do test negative, sometimes those rapid tests do not pick up the Omicron variant. So if you are still sick, please stay home and not spread more germs around our county.
Thank you. Oh, yeah, crazy.
I just have one quick question. So based on the spike, do you know what variant is what here in Pope County?
Right now, just based on what we're seeing, if you look closely here, we did dip a little bit in December. And we're like, finally, we're, we're having this long surge, we're getting down. But then we spiked back up. And just based on information that with the variant when it came into state, that we're more dealing with Omicron in this spike in, at the mid-December to January. This previous spike, that was all Delta. But regardless of what variant is, Delta, Omicron, test positive, please stay home. So one may have different symptoms than the other, but again, it's your health. Please stay home and be safe and do your best to mitigate vaccination. Wear a mask, wash your hands, donate blood.
Thank you. Chad, Substance Abuse Scorecard update.
So in front of you, you have Substance Abuse Scorecard. What I did is got four sections. Law enforcement statistics, District Attorney statistics, Treatment Court statistics, and then judicial sentences handed down for the time period. Pared down the statistics to try to be more in scope with what I think you guys are looking for. Law enforcement statistics was the total jail booking for the month while with substance-related. What wasn't?
That's the black box?
That's the black box. You see that 41 of 101, so about 40% of bookings are for substance abuse. The drug of choice for those bookings, you can see exclude alcohol, methamphetamine is pretty much exclusively the drug of choice. And then repeat offender versus first-time offenders booked. And you can see that the first time or repeat offenders outnumber the first-time offenders two to one, which has been fairly consistent. It's good track this.
What does book mean?
So everybody that's arrested in Pope County is booked into the county jail.
Okay.
So that's a good indicator of how many are getting arrested in the county. And a good way for us to track the law enforcement. We house everyone. District Attorney Statistics, these are the cases, the substance abuse cases, charges filed by the district attorney in the respective. So the law enforcement arrests, but then the DA has to charge. Sometimes there's, you know, can be a considerable gap in time from the time of arrest. So it's not necessarily reflective of the 101 booked in jail in December. Does not automatically transfer over to the number charged. But of those substance abuse charges, you can see delivery of meth and possession of meth, if you exclude alcohol-related, are the primary charges. Delivery of meth, I was kind of, I hate to say glad, but from my old career, glad to see that the delivery of meth charges were higher than I've seen since we started tracking this. And that's the sale or the providing methamphetamine. Treatment of court statistics, breakout, who we have in treatment court by the stages. And then also where we are with referrals, people pending admission, that kind of thing just kind of gives you an overview. And then the last, figuring out a way to display the judicial end has been a little bit of a trick. But what we worked on and what we came up with, I think, is what you guys are looking for. These are methamphetamine cases, methamphetamine charges and the sentences handed down from the court for those time periods that put November and December on here. So one consistent thing, if you're going to look at trends, is jail time handed down went from six months to one year. Probation varied from 18 months to three years. There's a combination of sentencing in there. Everybody with probation also got jail time on the front end of it.
Can I ask you one question on this? Is each line meaning how many people they gave charges to, to the court? Or where's the number of charges?
These are the disposition. So this is each defendant, so.
So these are per, so you got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10?
Persons.
10 persons on meth that ran through the court system. Is that what I'm seeing?
Yes, sir.
In November and you got one, two, three, four, five in December?
Yes, sir.
So these are, okay.
Right. And then assessments, so that's if the court orders them to undergo any kind of like drug assessment or special assessment. AODA is alcohol or other drug assessment. It's a standardized assessment. And then if there's a unique tag on to their court sentence, for instance, you see one person got seven months jail, that runs concurrent with a 56-month prison term. What that means is they've already been sentenced to 56 months in prison. That seven months will be served as part of that. So not added on, they still got 56 months.
Did the judge actually make someone apologize to an officer?
Yep. You see that there's an apology to an officer. That often happens when there's a resisting arrest charge or something attached to a charge. There'll be an apology to an officer's. So I think that's kind of what you guys have been looking more for is each section and kind of an accountability standard.
If anyone wants this information or additional stuff or fine tune it, I think just go directly to Chad, talk to you about it, right?
Right.
Okay. Thanks, Chad. Under announcements and supervisors report, Lisa, can you first say you had something you wanted to make sure you brought up?
So I just wanted to mention the change of date.
Oh, that we need to discuss that. Sure.
Couple of beautiful parts here that I've got. So you have a calendar in front of you. I don't know what you guys want to look at, but.
Where's the calendar card?
Oh.
So that date is on the 15th.
It's pasters when it's done that we've done on the Thursday after or just wait another week.
Anyone have any opinions about the good date? We keep it the same week or do we just move it to a Tuesday the following week? What would you guys, staff, what would you guys rather do? Week after? You guys have that fun anyways?
No, I'm just going to, right after the meeting, I've got a wedding.
Oh, that following week, the 16th, you're gone? And you're, you're gone on the 22nd too? Big deal. So what do we have? We have, what do you, you had the.
We're gonna have, we got that broadband issue to see if we want to move forward with that so that we can decide.
When are you back?
Well, I leave the 16th, the day after the, what was supposed to be the board meeting. I'm not back for that, not the whole next week I'm gone.
Paid or unpaid?
I'm paying on this one. It's my daughter's wedding.
The week before?
Did you get everything ready? I mean, executive and federal government are going to be after that.
I can't do the eighth. And you have to revolve around me, but.
How about the 10th? If we did it, hey, we have executive and general government on that day. If for some reason we had to amend the agenda, we have time to do it, but we can do it.
On what day, Chris?
Thursday the 10th.
Most towns have theirs. I mean, I have.
Oh, their town board meetings that night? Okay.
Home Lakes.
Home Lakes that same night, sure. You have to have your stuff done? Do we have anything that you have to do that you can't push off until?
Well, I, I've got very capable people. The thing, the only one that has to be done in the month of February is broadband.
Building?
And the building.
We had the building too.
But if, I think with broadband, Cliff will be here. And I think between Cliff and Chad, who's been working on this closely, I think I can handle it, answer your question. And I'll have things ready if we do something, then we'll be ready to go.
Let's go Tuesday, the 22nd. Is all good? Any announcements or supervisors' reports from outside meetings?
I've been, been meeting with virtually, of course, telephone with Wes. Trying to get a handle on some projects that they're doing, that I can give a legitimate report. It's unbelievable what they accomplish. You have decent.
Anyone else? Not seen any? Do we have to go into a closed session?
We talked today, we do have an update. And Joe and I and the staff talked, we thought it does make sense for a quick closed session.
The one. Session is, can we talk about an open session with the closed session as regards to? Joe?
So I can say that the closed session is going to be in reference to the letter that was passed out at the December board. We can't, unfortunately, because nothing is on the agenda, I can't address that issue because it's not noticed. So we would potentially run afoul of the open meetings law. So in order for me to give an update, we would have to go into closed session.
Okay. And do we have any problems with what we did last month? Again, with one particular supervisor that you're going to close session if supervisor chooses to stay in?
I'm not afraid of going into the closed session. If Ms. LeBlanc chooses to stay, that's perfectly fine. I would suggest that it would not be a bad idea for her to recuse herself, but she is not required to do so. And I will give the same report regardless of whether she is present or not.
So it's Ms. LeBlanc's choice.
Don't break a rule or anything.
All right. So what we're gonna do is we need a motion to go into closed session. And what we're gonna have to ask is. And well, we have a few people still in the room. We're gonna have to ask you guys to leave, please. Why don't you stay until we get into closed session? Let's see what he says in closed session.
He's gonna give the same report. I know what you're talking.
Yeah. I get it. All right, so now, now we can have a motion to go, a motion going to closed session.
Motion to go in for 1985, one G.
That's what your second is. Thanks Supervisor O'Connell for being direct on that. All, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Closed session. We did that. Yeah, we're back on. Now, Joe, what do you got? Do a adjourn? We have a second? Everybody saying aye? Adjourn.
Aye.
Bye, John.
Bye-bye. Treatments are.